Let's see if you lowered your money.
What?
We're seeing if you lowered your money.
How many you lowered?
That's your office.
Oh, okay. All right. Well, I'll take that good save. Thank you.
Cause I didn't know what it hurt. I'm pretty convinced I have to listen.
Anything for you.
Good.
I think you guys doing the letters cool off.
Yeah, I hope they're all some.
It's cool off enough so I got paid.
They like this. Just saying. I know you're like, you're eating your menu. Cause you work on air patients. Huh? You work in air. I know. So you run there. You bring them out of the speech. They use their.
There's no school.
Well, I don't know. That's why I was saying. You get some like your board classes. Get that away and then what you mind? You know, whatever.
So you can say like you bring the thing up to everybody. That's the rule.
Yeah, he knows.
I got management.
Yeah, true. All the A B classes we put in classes. Yeah.
Basically.
So.
Two places they recognize all of them too.
Yeah, you know, which actually did for the more than.
She's not like that. Very. George, George and Towers and.
No, it's actually a group. Yeah, people are raised. I can't say it's only one day.
Okay. Did he?
What grade did?
Head.
Yeah, we did that. This is our seniors today. We did.
I do. Okay. Something about they say. They might. Director. They were. First. I would have thought. It's very funny. Go away. Close here. Well, no, this is, this is. Yeah. So it is. They said. So. So let's hold it short. Yeah. It's. It's something about. It's something they want to pay on the state. Physically, they face it. It's like a. I want to. It's a good. They don't want to say. That's why. Yeah. Yeah. It's one of my. I just. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah. You had to press. You guys. Now. So. I took. I would. I would. Which is. I mean. That's what we're here for. Yeah. Yeah. It's. That's why I don't have. For. Because. Then it goes. Why? We can't. I have. I have. I'm just. I'm just. Yeah. 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 I'm. Yeah. 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 Tours. Tours. Around. Goes towards. Tour. That was. Rain. Tell me. Yeah. 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 They've. They've. Yeah. 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 He's. Yeah. Keep twenty. Yeah. I did. Yeah. These are. Or. Yeah. 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 Bad one. Yeah. Okay. So. So. Yeah. 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 It's. Let's. You. Yeah. And we're gonna get. Cause I. And then you just. Like. I keep. I look. I should. I suppose. I study. Watch. Preferably.
I told special meeting of North Huntington Board of Commissioners for Wednesday. All your report two thousand sixteen is out again. The order will call. Mr. Harold, Eric, Mr. Hydis, Eric, Commissioner Bertini, Commissioner Gray, here, Mr. Cessenda, here, Mr. Casero, here, and Commissioner Martino.
Everybody please rise from the plate. I pledge allegiance to the fight of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I want to say, is it Mr. Wakehead?
That's me.
Please take your name and address for the record, please.
Two two nine Bethel Road, Ray Jed, one five six four two. Last week, slowly but surely, after twenty years of living here in North Huntington, I'm being driven out of this community because I feel that you guys are trying to make this the Upper St. Clair of Westmoreland County, the way you're spending money. I come in here a few times a year to complain about my driveway being flooded to the zoning department and to the public works department. It took me seven years to get fixed and corrected. And I don't see anybody in here. You guys want to spend a half million dollars of a reserve fund, that's probably some of my taxes and yours too, on this building, which I don't see anything wrong with inside. Like I said, I come in here, nobody's in here, nobody except the staff. Okay? Your new school district, where it keeps raising my taxes. I'm a pensioner. When I worked for those office for forty years, I didn't care what you guys did with my money or raise my taxes. Did Mr. Obama give me a cost of living raise this year? No. But yet, all my taxes, be it the state or the township, is going to go up through the roof. Do I, do I pay my car registration fee? The Westmoreland Commissioners got that five bucks? Yeah, because I need a car. But yet they find some seven million dollars laying around somewhere. Are they going to reduce that five dollar increase in my registration fee? I got it. Don Mar, he votes for to, to raise taxes for the state. He's my representative here. When I call him and complain to him, he don't want to hear about it. Okay? So I'm against any type of re-minimization of spending money, more money, in on this building. That's my comment.
Thank you, sir. As you know, citizens, I demand.
I, I, I spoke with Mr. Jed before and explained to him that what, what was in the Norman Star proposed by the architect was kind of a, a elegant menu, that we could do some of it or all of it. And I assured him, I thought the board was not going to perform all of it because we definitely, I believe, start the portico right off the bat. I think there's some other things on there that maybe the whole board won't agree on, but I think we, we also, we agree that there are, there are some things that need to be done to make the building handicap accessible. And, and in general, while people on the outside, the building, the bricks, the rotten columns, the rotten shutters, the paint stains on the building, things like that. I mean, I can appreciate his calm insight and I agree with him for the most part, but there are some things that we have to do. I mean, there, there are also people, including one of my neighbors, that stops me every much along and says this, the townhouse is an embarrassment for the kind of community that we live in, that it should look much better on the outside. Those are the things I think I would like to address and, and that's just where I'm at. I don't think we're going to come anywhere close to spending a half million dollars, but there are some things that I think need to be addressed. My opinion.
I, I haven't agreed with Rich. Those of you I have on here, we was in a discussion, babe, anyway, that we're looking at, we're going to discuss it and decide which ones you want to do, which ones we don't want to do at this point. Because I did read what was in the Norman Star and if you read it, yeah, it looks like we're going to spend all that money to do everything in this facility. And I don't think that's going to happen. It's my vision.
I agree with both, which contain, I think, two hundred and thirty thousand dollars for the portico line, I believe so. And we were not looking to doing that anyway, so.
Yeah, I appreciate you coming up and I'm glad you came up today when we were talking about a strategic plan for the township. Cause I often hear that from residents, you know, when I speak with them about the taxes and, and the school district raises a millage every year that they're allowed to by the state. Thankfully, that we've held studies since I went on board. We lowered taxes once since I went on board. So, yeah, I mean, I, I get, that's a great discussion topic. We can talk about a little bit later tonight. That's one of my main wants in discussions for later.
Yeah, just to follow up on that, mentioning taxes, of course, you mentioned the school district, naturally, we have nothing to do with the school district taxes. The county, again, we have nothing to do with the state, none of our his office. I've been on the board quite a long time and in the eighteen years, almost nineteen years that I've been here, we, we raised taxes once, I think it was in two thousand by one point five mils, which I realized right away was a mistake. And since then, we've lowered them twice, a half mil each time. So basically, and I'd still like to get that third half mil back so that they're back to where they were when I got on the board in ninety seven or ninety eight, whenever it was. But, yeah, so it, it, since nineteen ninety eight, the taxes have gone up just a half mil for the township. But we're, we're, we're not, no embarrassment to the school district.
Excuse me, sir. Mr. Jed, I thought you were happy with the work that we did for you, public portion. You even sent me a thank you card, which I don't.
Right, I did. And.
That was very nice of you to do.
I know, but before you did it, I had to waste my money on seven rolls of film, give it to that gentleman there, and he would give it to you. And finally, I spoke to you and it was done. I am totally happy with what you did, but in the meantime, when I had flooded twice, I did not get a penny or ask the township for a penny to help me bail out my basement. And when it started flooding, when you guys were doing sewage work down there last year, I called the fire department, who said they would not pump out that driveway till it started going into my house or was in my house. Meanwhile, the sewer that you guys were replacing down on Malt's Lane had a piece of wood blocking that part of the sewer. And you guys had to put in, call a couple of people down on a Sunday to remove that piece of wood. I'm fine now.
Okay.
Thank you.
If you have any other problems, feel free to call me.
Oh, I'll, I'll be up there personally to see you. I appreciate your help there. I do. I do, really.
I know. Thank you for sending the card.
That's okay. I, when you do a good job, I always call for mention.
Right. Okay. Thank you, citizens, Jim. But next item is workstation discussion.
Thank you. We met, the board met, we had discussion concerning introduction to strategic planning, John Tran, who we, we brought on because it's a consult to help guide us through this strategic planning process, which is, which is the first for North Huntington. And it was included in last year's budget that was approved by the board commissioners at the time. And I think the current board, which the new board members also embrace the concept of doing some strategic planning, just to get a feel for collectively, you know, where we want to go. And we probably don't spend much time having these sorts of discussions in our meetings. Our biggest opportunity to really provide direction is the annual budget meeting. And that's worked out relatively well. We probably not had as many discussions as we should have had. So that being said, John's back here tonight, as you know, he did spend a little bit of time just kind of introducing and talking to the commissioners. He spent some time, definitely some time meeting with, like, turning myself, all the department directors to try to get a feel for their vision for, for their department or Huntington. At this point, we certainly need to get some guidance from the board commissioners. And I don't anticipate this being a one-time decision, you know, we spent an hour and a half or two hours here and we're good for the next ten or fifteen years. So I think this will be the start of an ongoing process for us. And John's certainly going to lead us through that. So I'll go to turn the floor over here at this point.
Okay, thanks. Good to see you all again. And as John said, last time we spoke, we gave some introductory information and talked briefly about the purpose of the strategic plan, overviewed the SWOT analysis that we did, talked about some of the results in the meeting with the department directors, meetings with the department directors, and my field view of some of the facilities in the township. And what I asked is that when we left last meeting, I gave some blank sheets of paper, that maybe you draw some notes down between then and now on some key issues. And what I'd like to do is first hear from you, if you'd like to start with that, there's some issues that you want to get on the table right away, but also provide a framework for it. So this, this whole process is organized by department. So we're looking at administration, parks, recreation, planning and zoning, police and public works. And our recommendations will be organized according to those topic areas, recognizing obviously that many, if not all municipal issues cross multiple departmental boundaries. But there are some things, when you look at each department, that are unique to each department, and we sure to hit those on the head. So I have some specific things that I want to talk about for each department, but I thought we first start with, if you have anything you'd like to talk about before I dive in, I'd like to document that and we can fit it into one of the, one of the categories. So if anybody wants to go first, or would you like me to dive in, your call? What's that?
Dive in.
Dive in, alright.
We'll bring them up.
Okay. Yeah. Interrupt me. Let me know if you, you know, you want to talk about something I'm not talking about. So let's first start with administration. One of the key topics there is economic development. So when we did this SWOT analysis, it became very apparent that in my review of what's happening in the area from a perspective, this is a priority. The board has previously recently invested in prioritizing economic development and the township's role in that. We want to make sure that continues to be a priority. So, and part of, part of that was this community identity piece, the logo, the, the brand. So I want to emphasize that that needs to be a continued priority, that that message is consistently conveyed across all departments. And that message is more than just a logo that comes with an identity that is North Huntington Township. Because a consistent theme that, that you're going to see in the, in the report is that consistency and clarity of message goes a long way. Because a lot of times, from municipal perspective, you're putting on fires in so many different directions and you might get inconsistencies across department and across functions in terms of how North Huntington addresses that issue. So this community identity, the branding, is more than just a logo, it's also a lot of message about what North Huntington's all about. We want to make sure we incorporate that in everything that we do. So ensuring that identity is consistent. And that means, you know, from plow trucks to township website to anything, letterhead, anything that you're doing needs to have that identity and needs to mean something behind it. It needs to be a priority for staff in terms of outreach and communication. Also, with respect to economic development, talk about the process of bringing new development or redevelopment in all the way through the final issuance of occupancy permit, for example. And that's a continuum and it goes through and across multiple township departments. So I, I, I think that we want to look at how we do a couple of things along that continuum. In terms of the beginning of the process, somebody who's interested in development in North Huntington Township, we really need a single point of contact at the staff level so that the development community knows that this information can get them the information they need about North Huntington and then guide them or lead them to the process. Because what happens is if we have a developer, you know, it's like, it's like one of your kids, it doesn't like the, they answer that you guess your mom and guess your dad. So the developer calls one person in the township and they get my answer about a certain thing related to development requirements. And like that answer, they call somebody else to get a different answer. And all of a sudden, you've got this confusing conundrum about what the requirements are for sidewalks or what the, the land development approval process is, or how long is it going to take me to get my occupancy permit? Again, that consistency of message goes a long way. And have a simple point of contact that's familiar with that whole process is important. And having all the pieces aligned behind it. So the pieces behind it are the land development regulations, the land use plan, the comprehensive plan. We touched on this last time about the need to update those things. And all of those things are always pointing in the same direction and everybody should be working together to implement them in a consistent way. So pointing to single point of contact for economic development, and that's, that's a two-way street. So that's outreach, getting information out in terms of attracting new development, building relationships with regional organizations that encourage development, the county and other county development agencies. Then it's also getting information in, like I said, when a developer has a question or it has a proposed project, that, that should initially come to that same single point of contact. So that message is clear, both one in and out about what development's all about in North Huntington Township. So, single point of contact, simplifying the process, getting the regulations up to date. I'm getting a whole bunch of, you know, I like to think of these types of strategic plans as a, as a continuing process. We're kind of hitting the tips of the iceberg on all these topics. Cause we could talk about each department for hours on end. Like our goal here is to just hit on some of the key issues. Also, within that economic development topic, keeping that business, community, education and outreach going, the e-newsletter needs to be a continued priority. You recently, a year or so ago, did economic development evaluation. There's already some good implementation that's happening that needs to continue. Development, it says, looking at that full package of how does development occur, why does development occur, where does development occur? How do you make North Huntington attractive and appealing to the development community? How do you work with those regional economic development agencies to use the tools that you have that limited to local level? But if you have some tools, you can then leverage and combine with county, regional and state tools to help facilitate development. If you do have a, a letterhead that previously been used in the township, you have A O E Z with the bank industrial park, so you've got some examples and some things to build on. That needs to be a priority moving forward because you've got, you know, all the easy stuff is done, you know, for most, for most part. So you've got some sites that may have some challenges from an infrastructure standpoint or availability standpoint, you've got redevelopment projects that have big upfront costs, money to, to help to facilitate those happen, which ultimately obviously will increase tax base and have the benefit, a variety of benefits to the community. Any questions about the economic development aspect of administration? Anything, any thoughts or ideas I didn't hit on that you think should be a priority from economic development standpoint?
No, I think, John, that when we talk, you know, I said one of the, you know, sometimes the, the board is reactionary to some things and they just, they, that's just kind of nature of the beast sometimes. But this is one of the, the areas that I think the prior board, I think new board members are really, are really interested in in economic development. It started with, I think, the shopping center, North Shopping Center, which was really a huge success. So I think they, they pointed us in a direction and we've been somewhat successful, we just want to continue that. So I, I think that was, it's a perfect, it's a perfect example of what we're talking about. Prior to the board really giving us that direction, we probably wouldn't have done that involved in the project and trying to get involved in it. Now we know they're collectively interested in it, so we follow through on that, at least we tried to.
Yeah, and there's tangible benefits to that. The development community currently in Western Pennsylvania is relatively small. Work gets out of here difficult to deal with, there is confusing to develop in North Huntington Township. But if North Huntington Township publicizes itself as a great place to live and work and, and, and build, and also has an easy streamlined development approval process that we can help walk. and also has an easy streamlined development approval process that we can help walk you through, that goes a long way. It will really help. So, and keeping on with the prioritization of those efforts, I think, is an issue because it all comes full circle in terms of financial stability. And some of the issues we'll talk about later in terms of the availability of capital to reinvest in the community. Okay. External and internal communications. I'm going to skip over internal because that's going to wrap everything up at the end. Talk about external. There have been some recent efforts. The newer community sign is one. This is an area where there is some additional opportunity for public engagement. The Board last time had some good ideas about community outreach and stakeholder engagement, having specific meetings on specific topic areas, and we folded that in as a possible recommendation. There are also maybe some low to mid-hanging fruit in terms of opportunities to engage the public in a more meaningful way through social media, online, through an online permitting system, through online work orders even. I mean, there's a whole variety of ways that you can make it easier for the public to engage the township and making sure that they're getting the service that they need. And that reminds me to go back a little bit. I think last time I touched on some business principles that apply to this type of effort in local government setting. And customer service is one of them. And that's also one of the recurring themes is that often had people say that government should run out of business. There's a lot of good principles that go along with that. There are also some reasons why that can be a challenge sometimes. But customer service is one that is often overlooked by local government, but is easily translatable from the business community to the local government. Prioritizing customer service, talking a little bit about actual training for customer service. And that means not just saying we do good customer service. That means updating our interactions with the public, whether it's the community or residents, in terms of how they apply for permits, how they sign up for recreation programs, how they rent facilities. How do we make all of that easier for people to do? Because let's face it, you know, most of us, when we walk into a municipal setting, whether it's North Huntington or other places, we're stepping back in time. It just depends on how far back you're stepping, right? So, it's either five, 10, 15, some places like going back in the 1950s, then I don't know where you are. And you have to fill out everything on hard copy paper that's, you know, the carbon duplicates, you know, that nobody uses anymore. So, there really are some opportunities to upgrade the systems, make it easier for folks. Because they say, well, wait a minute, I pay every other bill that I pay by credit card online. Why in the world do I have to come in, I'm not saying that you have to do this here, but why do I have to come into your building and write out a hard copy check, which I don't even have anymore? So, I have to go to the bank and have the pretty special checks so I can pay my such-and-such building in this amount of money. So, opportunities for customer service. And to make it easy for them to pay the bill, there's less opportunity for complaints about the bill. So, opportunities for customer service, improving customer service, customer interactions, ease of signing up for programs or any facilities. And while I'm talking about the business practices, in addition to customer service, looking at the return on investment. Now, it's not always translatable because it's not necessarily about the law and law and policy. Obviously, there are financial implications at the local level. When we talk about return on investment, also looking at trending increasing in tax base, trending and increase in population. All these things are important indicators where communities who are seeing their population decline have problems. Communities that see their tax base stagnate have problems. These are all things you can't take for granted. You need to benchmark, you need to be aware of those trends and try and avoid the point where you're looking back and saying, what should we have done 10 years ago? Because now here we are, 10 years later, and nobody's moving here anymore. Our tax base is stagnating or declining, and we can't afford to pay our bills, which is where a lot of Western Pennsylvania communities are, unfortunately. Speaking of other Western Pennsylvania communities, one other business practice, benchmarking and best practices. For better or for worse, there are like 2,100 and some odd crazy number of municipalities in Pennsylvania. There is a whole lot of examples out there of what to do well and what not to do so well. But look at those examples. And I think it's important that staff have the opportunity to interact with other communities. Say, hey, what are you doing? What's working? What's not working? So, that's another business practice that I think is translatable in benchmarking. You know, lots of communities say, hey, we'd like to be more like such-and-such community. Or we don't ever want to be such-and-such a community. Well, dig a little deeper. What's wrong with that community? What's right with that community? And see how it's translatable. So, some business practices I think are translatable to this strategic planning process and good to integrate with your strategic planning and your budgeting process. Any other thoughts on business practices? Because do you have any own businesses? Or something that you think that is translatable to the local government setting? Do you agree or disagree with some of what I said about those principles?
I agree a lot with what you said. I think it would be... I keep always hearing that government is so much different than business, which it is. But that doesn't mean we can't ask our residents, who I consider our customers, what we're doing right and what we're doing wrong. And that could be as simple as when Andy finishes the plans on the marketplace and then the gentleman that's from the development, a survey saying, asking questions, you know, like, was the process easy for you? How can we make the process easier? And then he makes us better. And I think we really missed that opportunity. And I think most government entities do miss that opportunity. We have a simple thing like we, in parks, and I know we're going to talk about parks later, but we still require people to come up here and reserve their picnic areas. West Warren County's been doing it online for years. It's not hard for us to do. The technology's there. I think that's something that we can save some time in doing. You know, there's technology out there that we can save time on. So, I think we need to use it.
Okay, good. Any other comments on that business aspect? Okay, so, as an example, I listed off, and the Commissioner just mentioned some examples about online facility rentals. So, this is a high-level strategic plan to say, the Board by, you know, identifying this as a priority, basically to go further. That doesn't mean that tomorrow, you know, it's going to be easy for Dan to go out and find the right system. But the point is, we identified as a priority for 2017. Maybe it's part of every budgeting process to say, we need to invest in some software. And sometimes now in the middle of 17, you know, Dan's had the opportunity to work with staff and some vendors and say, and the Board, and say, well, what's out there? What makes the most sense for the volume of rentals that we have? And I tell you, once you do something like that, your volumes are getting increased dramatically. It's just going to be so much easier. And a lot of people don't even know they can walk in here and rent a facility. And once it's online, it gets a lot easier. So, a lot of good ideas there. Okay, back to communications. Talk about external communications. We talked last time about regularly engaging community stakeholders. That can be a good priority to revisit every year. And that can be on a project-specific basis. So, as part of identifying a potential capital project. And the Board decides to move forward, why not engage the public in a setting that's other than, with, I don't know, the three minutes ago that I consented to podium and talk at you. Is there an opportunity for residents to have a facilitated discussion? To say, come on a Tuesday night, we're going to spend two hours and talk about this project. Let you know what it's about. Give us your feedback. So, project-specific stuff. Also, annually, we're placed here just an open forum. You know, this setting is not necessarily conducive always to dialogue. There's no better setting. There is no magic room setup for elected officials. But in the context of, okay, now your agenda item is public comment, go ahead, state your case. It's a little different than we're going to spend, what we're doing tonight. We're going to spend two hours and we're going to provide an opportunity for residents to give input, whether it's on a specific issue, whether it's on any issue. So, formalizing that as part of this plan, I think, is an important part of that engagement and buy-in. You're not going to make everybody happy all the time, but you do make a lot more people happier by giving them the opportunity to feel engaged in the process. And not just feel engaged, be meaningful engaged. So, regularly engaging some community stakeholders. I talked about customer service earlier, but specifically providing for budgeting, even requiring customer service training for the staff. Identifying sort of a hierarchy of who interacts most with the public and work your way down the list. This is real stuff. Some people think it's fluff. I've seen it have significant, real, and again, look at the business community. I shop at Lowe's and a lot of Home Depot, because I think that some customer service at Home Depot or mine anyway is horrendous. And I'll spend an extra 50 cents for whatever I'm buying because I know I can find something at Lowe's. I want to answer my question. Similar with municipal. It's an opportunity to interact with your constituents, residents, the taxpayers, the business community, and promote a message that says, we're glad you came here. Why should you be here? Tell your friends to move here. Tell your developer friends to go here. North Huntington's a place to be. So, that doesn't just come by saying, you know, please, we're going to customer service. It's a real thing. Need some training. And there are very specific things you can do to improve your customer service. With respect, still administration moving on from communications, internal communications, we'll talk about later. This is more external and customer service oriented. Still, we have been moving on to professional staff. Talk about the fact that North Huntington has the benefit of a professional staff. It's not always common or typical local government, particularly in Western Pennsylvania. Continue to invest in staff development. Leverage the opportunities you have in terms of organizational management. And we'll touch on this towards the end when we talk about internal communications. But the fact that you have a township manager structure is, it can be hugely beneficial in terms of the efficiencies and effectiveness of local governments. There are lots of examples when I talk about benchmarking and peer reviews. You don't have to look far to find places that don't have that type of structure and that really just sort of flounder. Last thing in administration, this process in and of itself, this strategic planning process. Who knows, you guys are dedicating some time tonight. You may not have come if I said we're going to spend six hours, but no. You know, hey, this is a beautiful night outside, but you're here. And you obviously are prioritizing this as important for the community. Do it once a year. Like John said earlier, I mean, you're spending the extra time on the budget, which is important, but, and this is important too. And this should dovetail with budgeting process. So, spend some time not talking about numbers right now, talk about priorities now. So that you're teed up when you start talking about numbers, you're all kind of on the same page with your strength of priorities. So, institutionalizing this strategic planning process and then also folding it in with the annual budget. Okay, there's some highlights on the administration end of things that I will come back to in internal communications if we have time. Anything about administration before, if I had missed anything, I'd use you out if you only got touched on. There should be priorities. Okay, we've wanted to park a square. This community is blessed with a park acreage that I think a lot of folks would be, would really be jealous of. In fact, I just read an article, it's not even St. Clair or Peters, and your school district are going through a process now to acquire the Royal Mills Park in South Hills, which is going to cost them a boot camp box because they're out of space. They're both out of space. And the townships are out of space. So, you guys are fortunately in that position. So, the opportunity here is what to do with that space. So, the priority would be, let's do some planning so that we know what the priorities are for facilities. What the needs are, what our priorities are, how to pay for them, where they're going to go. And that's a multi-level process. Your last recreation plan was updated in '04, so you're 12, 13 years old. It's time to update that. So, you have a sense of when you get an opportunity or a particular group that says, hey, we need... One of my favorites I had to deal with is pickleball. You guys said pickleball courts? Pickleball. I never knew what in the world pickleball buzz. I wish I could have did, but it's this new thing. Google it. People love pickleball now. And if you play it on, it's super inconvenient from a planning standpoint. You play it on like two-thirds of a tennis court. I mean, you can't easily stray off an existing court as my playing. But anyway, so in a community where I was working, three or four pickleball enthusiasts come in and were regaining. They really wanted a pickleball court. So, you know, having a framework to say, okay, that's a good strategy. Here are other priorities that were kind of in front of the pickleball court. When we get there, there may be an opportunity to revamp an existing tennis court because when we did our plan, the tennis court really wasn't identified as a priority. We can refer it because it's not really heavily used. My point is, when the pickleballers come to you, it's nice to have a plan on the shelf that's not, you know, 12, 13, 14 years old. So, you can refer to it and say, okay, we're going to get this on a list. Let's go through a process to evaluate it. That's the big picture. And then the little picture is, like I said, you're blessed to have a ton of park land. You really benefit from some master plans for each park. Because you've got these fields, program fields, sports fields, you've got open fields, you've got woodlands. You've just got a real, a lot of opportunity. And when it happens, a lot of those times where you've got so much opportunity and you don't know what to do with this and nothing is not with it, except what was put in place 20 years ago. And I see that a lot in a lot of communities. But going through the process of saying, okay, here's the acres we have. Engaging the public in what we think we need. How do those two things fit together? And then prioritize and have a plan in place. And then you'd be surprised. You know, you'd be surprised in terms of how the support rallies behind those projects. You'd also be surprised in terms of how the money actually comes in, whether it's, you know, municipal money, grant money, private money. If you have a plan in place, if people, communities ask me undoubtedly, for whatever kind of project I'm working on, how do you get all, how do you get the money? How do you get the money for these projects? Honestly, and this is not because I'm a planner, is you have to have a plan. You have communities that take the time and resources to have a plan, design those projects, and put those projects on the shelf. Just sitting there waiting for a state legislator to call and say, hey, I have some extra money. Or for a state department to call and say, hey, our grant round is coming up. Boom, I'm pulling that off the shelf. I'm submitting that grant application. I have a plan behind it. The support that I've got, the product I've designed, money's coming in the door. It's the ones where they say, you know, the communities say, I really wish we could get some money. Can we submit a grant application? For what? Nah, it might be a park. It might be a thing. You got to have a plan in place. So, a lot of folks maybe don't put so much stake in good planning, but it has direct financial benefits. So, for the parks sake, we need a big picture plan in terms of what the community needs, recreation programming-wise and facility-wise. And then we need some park master plans to lay out what's going to happen in each park and what can fit and what can't.
John, one thing parks and what you're talking about right now is one of the most concrete examples that is easy to grasp for myself, I think for the members on the Board. A few years back, it's been a few years now, you know, the township looked at a pretty extensive recreation complex for North Huntington Township, the northern area. And ultimately, you know, it wasn't built. It actually ended up being a referendum question because of the dead associated with it. And the majority of the residents in North Huntington, they voted, voted, didn't want that. So, I think one of the hardest things, at least for me, and possibly the Board, is everybody doesn't feel the same way. Me being, I might think it's great to have a new soccer field. Maybe I don't. Maybe there's people on this board to think our park system is adequate. So, just to think, well, we need to plan to build more, I don't think is necessarily accurate. It might be. There might be four, five, or six members that think, we need more here. Whatever the more is, we're not sure. There might be other people that think, this is fine. We're adequate. We, we're more than adequate. We provide a good level. We're not interested in maybe the additional costs associated with this facility because regardless of what's built, there's going to be costs for maintenance, staffing. And I think that, at least from my perspective, that's a valuable discussion to have really about what you can do. It's easy to say, I don't mean this to mean it at you. It's easy for any of us to say, yeah, I would like that. But to say, yeah, I'd like that and I'm willing to pay for it, that's the part that really, I think, that's where it matters. No one would say, we wouldn't want Public Works to plow roads in one hour. I'm not sure that people would say, I'm willing to pay an extra $200 a year to get that done. And I'm just making those numbers up. So, I think those are the discussions that really matter. And I think this Board's talking about recreation concretely, about saying, we want to do, we want to look at more facilities. Now, at least express to them, we need to kind of step back and do that in a logical manner. But ultimately, there are costs associated with those things. So, to me, that's... with those things. So, to me, that's, we got a discussion that may not happen tonight, but I think everybody needs to realize that's an important part of the discussion. Everybody may not feel the same way about our departments, the size of our departments, our staff level, what we do, what we don't do. Those are choices that are made. There's no right or wrong answer.
Well, I think just like this high level, providing the opportunity through the planning process to at least vet those ideas is what's important. And like you said, you may not have the money, or the money will be distributed, the priorities expended on these particular things, but to go through the process to allow the public to express what they think the township needs, and have the board weigh in in terms of what globally you think the township needs, and then go through a reality check process and say, "Okay, how do we pay for it?" And they made the decision, "We don't do anything." But at least you've gone through a process. And if somebody comes to you and says, "Why the world aren't you doing anything?" You say, "Well, because last year, we went through this process to do a park's plan and the end result was, you know, we're doing a good job. Nobody needs any more programming and they don't need more facilities, so we're kind of sticking with that plan for now until it's a brownstone to revisit that plan." So, yeah, good point about the realities of committing, funding it, and making sure that there's a sense, and you're not locked in by going through the planning process. You still have to go through the deliverer process of designing, paying for, and hiring. Okay, still in recreation, recreation programming. There have been great efforts to increase program, boy, even add program, because you're not just in future, you're in past or whatever, to provide programming through contractors, which a lot of communities do and to do successfully. You guys have been doing very successfully. I want to combine that with a discussion about staffing from a management level and a maintenance level. You've got a lot of facilities that, from my perspective, is pretty remarkable that they're kept at the level they're kept now with the staff and the resources that you have. And that always is a little bit of a yellow flag to me that you're at the breaking point. You know, it takes one potential, or you have catastrophe is kind of a strong word, but it takes one thing to kind of break that camel's back where, you know, things start to crumble and you just don't have the operational capacity to keep your parks and your programs at the level where they're at now. So, from my perspective, my assessment is that you're maxed out on both the facility side of the program and those two things come together because you're going to hear me say things like, "Increase staffing capacity." That doesn't necessarily mean hire a new person for ten people, fifty people. It means that within, within this topic, in the parks area, you need more capacity. And in my mind, you do two things. Increase recreation programming because you need, even though you're doing it through contractors, which can be much more efficient, it still takes effort to manage. Those contractors manage the signups coming in and all that stuff. So, to increase that, you really need some staff capacity to manage a larger program offering. From a maintenance perspective, there's a need for management of day-to-day operations. And that's not to say, and notice, this isn't about Dan not doing it or not doing it well. This is about, we talked about grant opportunities, long-range planning for parks. This is about the need for capacity to also think about the bigger picture stuff, to submit grant applications, to figure out what, and facilitate these park planning processes, to have the bandwidth to look at doing online signups. You know, if Dan's running, managing day-to-day maintenance staff on a daily, minute-hour basis, and also managing a field of consultants doing, or contractors doing programming, that is a full-time job. He's doing a great job now. Your township's doing a great job now. But given the trends toward growth and increasing service demand and the fact that you're kind of maxed out, you're not going to go much further. So, and that means also, like I said, from a facility standpoint, grant writing, planning, better picture stuff. So, staffing capacity upgrades in terms of the long range and also the day-to-day management and program capacity. Also, the program, direct program space. So, right now, you're doing some creative things through partnership with the school district, but that definitely goes so far. So, but then you also, you lumped or you leap to, which almost like the regional facility. I tend to think that taking that step is probably, you know, it's kind of in the horizon, but there's so much opportunity now with the township's facilities through looking at opportunities for better programming space in the township facilities, building those partnerships, increasing the staffing capacity. I think there's still room to grow before you need to leap to some sort of regional facility. It's still going to be looming on the horizon if this recreation planning process results in a brownstone support for that type of effort.
John, question. What's your thoughts on having a grant writer for our township?
Yeah, I've seen that, I see that done as sort of a part of a staff person, not necessarily one person dedicated and only grant writing. And it's hugely effective. You know, you can pay consultants to write grants, but they don't know the community like the, like the staff does. I might just talk about some opportunities there, but it's true. And I think that it goes a long way. The challenge is, and I've seen this happen, is it can't just be one more thing. You know, so, I'll take Bob, whoever Bob is, Recreation Director, if he's been early, he's doing it now, and now all of a sudden, he's a grant writer as well. Well, Bob didn't have the capacity to do it. So, that's why I'm talking about increasing the capacity. It's not like a one-to-one relationship. It's, okay, we look at this whole department, for example, and say, "We need some program capacity. We need some grant writing capacity. We need some management capacity." You fold that all into one, half a person or a whole person, you know what I mean? So, I think it's a good idea to do that in some form.
I think grant writing position is, takes a lot of time and effort and research, and I think that should be, you know, a position in itself. I assume you had to help out the parks, help out the police, the road department, whoever you, wherever you want to go.
Oh, I misunderstood. You meant across all townships. I thought you meant just for parks. Oh, yeah. Oh, for sure. Yeah, 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 yeah. So, grant writing across all township departments or functions? Yes, because there are opportunities out there, you know, limited compared to where we were ten years ago, but there are opportunities out there that you're missing now. I'm sure, I'm sure that, you know, because you don't have the capacity, you don't have the project in the hopper.
And they don't have the time to do it, you know. The individuals, you know, don't have the, park directors and, you know, the other directors don't have time just to do that because it's time consuming.
And it's hard and science. I mean, it's not, it's not just check the box. It takes some time and effort. And a lot of times, folks think it's easier than it really is. So, yeah, it's a great point. We'll fold that, fold that into the discussion.
Can you give us an example of a community that has a successful grant writer for some success stories?
Okay. Well, I mean, my, my direct experience as an administrator would be in Cranbury, where I did have a staff person that was dedicated and worked to grant writing. If one of you thought it would happen, I'd probably come up with tens of millions of dollars that would be on grants. Now, we would have gotten out of that if we didn't have that person. No, but it helps.
So, they basically paid for their position being a grant writer, whatever you paid them.
Yeah, I mean, it wasn't like a one-to-one, it wasn't like...
Well, yeah. They paid fifty thousand. I'm sure they got more than fifty thousand.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, yeah. And there have been other things too. I mean, I think it could be a full-time position, but if you look at this capacity across multiple departments, maybe there's something else that, you know, they can do, to fill in the gaps.
Yeah, for how busy going out there, you know, they could help out in other aspects of the township.
Or whatever. In that example, the one that I, the director responsible for, a lot of their function was in the planning and economic development realm. So, already kind of in that, got your head in that game from a grant writing perspective, and then when the rest of their grant application do, they're helping update master plans or work on economic development projects.
I do know, Rich, that in township, they send out that quarterly recreational pamphlet, and in the summer pamphlet in the back, which I may have missed the other times, there is the amount of grants that they receive because they're in the midst of fulfilling major recreational additions. They received over $300,000 in grants. Now, it was specific to different boroughs that are in that area. So, I don't know if different entities had to receive the benefit or not, but it was over $300,000. Oh, my.
You had paid to comment that there is firms out there to do this, right? There are people out there to do this, so we wouldn't have to hire a lone individual person.
I know. I mean, there are, there are folks that will write grants for you. Then there are, you know, a lot of our, our law, yes, they will help you get something.
Will you tell them what you've run out during a research and...
Yep. So, here's our priority list for 2017. Shop around and see what grants are out there that you think you have a reason, a chance of getting. Vet them with your department heads and say, you know, what's realistic here and at least, okay, so turn them loose and go after them. Yeah, I'm working in a community now that frustrate a lot that official doesn't understand why the money isn't just pouring in, as though, you know, we say the money's out there and they're just standing there with open arms waiting for it. And this doesn't work that way unfortunately. I mean, and the communities that have the wherewithal to invest in good grant writing and planning are often the ones that get the grants, which is somewhat upside down, but the, 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 especially if you get money as well. But investing in that planning and grant writing is a key factor. Okay, let's move on. Any, any, some more thoughts on parks and recreation and grant writing? Okay, let's move on to planning and zoning. I talked before about the need to update the regulations, and that really rests here within the planning and zoning function. Updating an aggressive plan, updating the zoning workers, updating the salado. Now, and continually, there is no, you know, I write ordinances for votes and I have always explained that there is no perfect ordinance. If there is, you know, I'm going to strike my lightning because it just doesn't exist. So, but going through the process of getting one updated, it's not going to be perfect. Getting a new one is dated sometime in this decade. Get it adopted, and then be willing to revisit. Something's going to come up and you're going to say, "Hey, we missed that. I never would have thought of that." No, you don't. Do an amendment. Don't be afraid to amend your ordinances. So, getting those things updated and then continually amending them is important. I also talked about the single point of contact and I thought here in terms of internal communication with respect to economic development. The development tool, the development community needs to understand how to interact with North Huntington Township. And North Huntington Township needs to understand how to interact with the economic community. So, back to the recommendation I talked from administration perspective when you're in that economic development realm, having that simple point of contact goes a long way. Now, it doesn't mean that simple point of contact is, you know, knows everything from development set of all the way through to issuing a building permit or doing an electrical inspection. It's almost familiar with that process and will consistently convey the North Huntington Township message with respect to getting development applications through that process. And will also help to mitigate bumps or dips in the road because there are going to be challenges as you go through the process. And back to the kid looking for a different answer, if you hit one of those bumps, the all of us can find a path to these positions. Look for the answer that you wanted here, and that creates internal challenges. So, having that simple point of contact, updating ordinances, and the last item there would be also looking at, you know, I spent the most time on parks, I think, because I have a secret past of parks recreation planning. So, I apologize. Most of the more time in these other topics, I just realized we spent a long, a long time on parks.
You can continue to talk.
I could. Crowds, I love parks, right? All right. Planning and zoning. So, I want to talk about aligning the expectations of that department from outside in and inside out, because right now is sort of a cornucopia catch-all area that deals with a variety of issues. And how those issues interact upstream and downstream. Upstream from an economic development perspective, downstream from a facility's perspective, from an infrastructure perspective. I'll break a little bit of that before I start talking tonight. So, having a clear picture and purpose and goals and objectives for what the responsibilities are for that department, I think are important. And how those responsibilities relate to, as I said, that's an upstream economic development function and downstream public works and infrastructure function. Because that department and that set of functions has a tendency to get caught in the middle everywhere, I just say, because of that, the fact of where their position is created. So, that's exacerbated by the fact that if it's unclear in terms of the goals or the objectives of the department or the responsibilities of the department are clear, that, that makes the problem even more challenging. So, recommendation there would be to go through a deliberate process of looking at that department. So, what is that department doing? Who's doing what? And does it make sense for those functions to be assigned to those people and for those functions collectively to be assigned to that department? Because we're looking at this globally. As I started out, I said, "This is not about creating silos." These are not silos. It is convenient to break down the discussion this way, but all of these issues cross many boundaries in many departments.
John, you could add some, I know what you're saying. You could add some concrete examples in the planning and zoning department, at least I can. I think of what our functions are. They do some really, really important things for us. And that department has, even though it's still relatively small for the size of North Huntington Township, but for what we asked them to do, they certainly grown since, since I've been here when we started, I think, with two or three people. I mean, the staff of some, some folks with some really impressive credentials at this point for the director down. When I started, we, code enforcement wasn't even handled in our, in our planning department. It was handled by a part-time, a lot of part-time police officers. Police officers, we did it on a part-time basis. I think against him, he kind of was given that. The staffing wasn't there. So, I think, you know, the board recognized at the point we moved code enforcement into that department and in the full-time position. We've put an emphasis on our GIS system, which you've probably seen somewhat. I think it's a pretty impressive system of, you know, electronic information that every department uses here. And the boards over the years have been very, they certainly always find that never questioned the need for that or does it make sense to have that, you know, that position and all that technology. But I think at some point, you're looking at a level of service. And, you know, we have one code enforcement officer. I think he's efficient. I think he works. I think he does his job. But at some point, when you have 10,000 properties, you're going to make a decision. This, this board's going to say, "Either we like the level of service or we don't like the level of service." And what I mean by that is, we're getting to the problems or we're not. There are communities our size that probably have three or four full-time code enforcement officers without a doubt. They're, I don't mean to say it's the wrong way, they're looking for problems. And we maybe should do that more. Maybe some people think we should do that more. Others may think, "No, we're doing okay. We, we get the problems. People live call. We go out and resolve those issues." So, I look at it, you know, you talked about it a little bit more subjectively, higher level. I look at it a little more concrete, just from the board's perspective. Every, when we talk about doing things and doing more, sometimes it really is a manpower issue from a standpoint of what, you know, what we do. We've been fortunate enough to expand the department somewhat over the years. We've kept that manpower up. Again, it's not, it's still not a very big department, but it's reasonably sized for where we, where we came from. So, those are the sorts of things I think, again, the more theoretical we can talk about. They get a lot of resident complaints about junk-in yards and unregistered vehicles and buildings falling down. We can't get to them, not because we're competent, because we're just, we don't, we don't have any more capacity. That may be an opportunity for them to say, "We need, we can look at that. We need to add more, you know, manpower there, realign the resources." But I look at things sometimes more concretely just because they make more sense to me. So, again, from the board's standpoint, maybe something else to think about in, in planning and zoning. I think from a building inspections standpoint, we probably do a pretty good job on that. I'm not aware of us not getting the building permits and doing inspections. We can, we can analyze that, get Andy's input on it. I don't know if the commissioners hear anything about that not functioning as, as well. I think we do probably a pretty good job on that. So, just something a little more concrete in planning and zoning maybe for the, for the board to think about. And you could probably delve into that, but those are one of the things you really be looking at. It's, it's a level of service issue.
Right. And I, the thing that I want to touch on as a good transition to the code enforcement aspect is, yes, there's a discussion about capacity, but also outlining priorities and making sure that those priorities are clear. And here's what I mean by that. Code enforcement is a really interesting world to live in. Um, and, and nobody's happy in code enforcement, that just makes a difference, nobody's happy.
It's nature of the business.
Nature of the business, staff's unhappy, the customers aren't happy, but do the best you can. Because I mean, reality is, you're going out, you're telling somebody, you're doing something wrong, that never works real well, right? Um, so anyway, uh, you're, you're either being reactive or proactive from a code enforcement standpoint, or you can be, be doing both. But I think that, well, you know, and the idea of staffing is definitely something that needs to be discussed. And some of the things that works, you gotta throw in a body on a problem. Before you throw a body on a problem, I want to realign and say, okay, right now, we're trying to do both, but we're maxed out. Doing reactive complaint-driven code enforcement is not a bad thing, from my perspective. Um, so, as a starting point. So if this board will collectively say, that's, that's what we're doing, that, that's our policy, we're, we're complaint-driven, and we're gonna do that really well. And then we say, well, you know, we're doing it really well, we need some more capacity because we can handle complaints. And we'd also like to be able to transition into being more proactive, because although we're not getting complaints about it, we know that abandoned buildings that have problems and vacant lots that have problems are dragging our community down. Nobody's banging on our door, come and fix it, but we know that as our roles, like officials, we need to do something about it. Let's be more proactive on it. But that, that means that to be successful, it should be a deliberative process. And we all agree, right now, we're proactive, we're reactive, complaint-driven. Let's do that well, let's be responsive, let's have the customer service, let's track it well, let's, let's hit them. We need to grow that and revisit that next year, the year after, yes, and every year. Um, and then look for opportunities and needs in our community. So on the code enforcement side, again, there's a capacity issue there, and first, there's also a, a priority issue or an approach issue, proactive or reactive. Recommend it, you can't really, to do proactive first, which, which actually is a little bit of what, what is the challenge. When you're doing both and you're not doing complaint-driven well, you get into trouble. Because when you're not managing the complaints well, but you're out there with your, your badge banging on doors, you know, knocking on doors telling people that, that are over in their grass, that doesn't go over real well, because they just put right down in the street and say, hey, Sally down the street's been complaining to you for years about this issue, you haven't dealt with it. So you really, you can't do them both unless you've got the capacity. You can't do proactive first, you gotta get the, the reactive complaint driven now, and that's, I think, your starting point.
Question, Andy, how do you think we do it though? You can all that.
It tends to be feast or famine. Um, John mentioned about the building inspection. Hard to see time for building inspection, plan review, without a doubt, as of this spring. Everybody gears up, I'm gonna put in a pool this year, I'm gonna get that addition on my house, I've always talked about, uh, the, the snow's behind them, developers wanna start developing their sites. So in the spring, we are in the fortunate position of having Josh, who's trained both as a building inspector, planner, viewer, and code enforcement. So I'll be perfectly honest, code enforcement takes the backseat in the spring months. Uh, you try and put out the hottest fires and, and deal with the complaints as they come in. Uh, this time of year, as buildings are nearing completion and pools have been installed and so forth, now we have more time to deal with the code enforcement issues. Uh, but it, it tends to be feast or famine for both of them, both code enforcement and for building inspection. Uh, we're, we're fortunately poised to have that capacity in one person, but could we use another code enforcement person? I think we could. Physically, I don't know where we put them. Uh, we're, we're pretty much out of room, we don't have any more offices available, unless we give up files space for a meeting room or something, but, um, that'd be lying, if I said we couldn't use another one at some points in the year. There may be times when things are a little slack, but there's times when Josh would love to add twenty hours in a day too.
Okay, all right, thank you for your...
Andy, here's, here's where I think where technology plays a big part also of, of your line. Do you have Wi-Fi in cars? Do you have, do your guys have iPads?
No, we haven't gotten any. Um, we haven't gotten any good concrete recommendations, and actually, maybe John would have some ideas on that. If, if they can go out in the field and do some of this stuff, check the logs, touching the screen without having to come back and do documentation. And, and I'll be honest, documentation is probably one of our points where we fall down. Uh, when that person leaves or retires, I bet a lot of the information goes in their head and, and it isn't documented. That's one thing we've been trying to do by having individual attached parcel ID files. We can keep a record of anything dealing with that piece of property. But the file's no good if you don't put the information in it. And it's gotta either be put in electronically or put in, uh, with a piece of paper.
And also, that, that gentleman, whoever we have in the field, can access, uh, through, via the internet, our computers are tied in with our computers and find any answer to a question that somebody may have out in the field. That way, they're not coming back here and looking on your computer. I, I, I think it's, you know... If you don't use the technology that, that is available to make jobs easier, then we're just spinning our wheels and hiring more people.
Andy, can you give us a cause, like, like you're coming up to see what's happening, what we go for, you know?
I, I would just say that, and, and maybe get back to John, he probably would write something in his report, is, we may want to explore technology in general throughout the departments to determine what's feasible and technologies, there's lots of technologies, so it makes sense something that doesn't, depending on the size of your organization, what you're trying to accomplish. But that may just be a, it's kind of a recurring theme, so it's something we maybe need to look at more throughout the departments to see what makes sense, whether it's level technology, interaction with citizens. You know, that may be something this board says, we really want to look at things, even if we decide not to do some things, at least we've looked at it and said, that doesn't make sense for us. I mean, our police departments probably spend more time, more, more than anybody on, on making, on doing that. There are, there are probably more than, more than other departments are.
Yeah, that's a good point, um, because I, I was gonna say, I don't know if any of these questions were rhetorical or not, but I have been through that process of trying to find solutions for code enforcement officers. There really isn't a great solution out there, but the best first step would be get them mobile. So get them iPads that are tough pads or something equivalent, uh, have, get them Wi-Fi in the vehicles. Have, have the ability to tap into whatever digital file system the township has in the cloud, uh, for code enforcement, property files, whatever. And at least, like you said, that they'll have the information at their fingertips. Now, it would be perfect if they could write the citation there, print it out, uh... Yeah, but, but sometimes it gets overwhelming trying to find the perfect solution there. The first step, you know, you're not gonna waste, it's not gonna be a wasted step. To get everybody mobile, to get them Wi-Fi, to get, get some files in the cloud, that's a huge first step that you can build on and, and grow. So, and then, and that would go then across multiple departments.
Yeah, I, I want to ask a question, just in John's opinion, is, do any of our departments have an EBT scanner? If I'm gonna come, when I, when I'm gonna come, you probably have one.
Yeah, we, we, we have scanners in the police cars, um, and we recently, we were the first police department in Westmoreland County that were allowed to go with e-citations. Uh, so we basically, if, if Mr. Blanco's interested in it, Sergeant Sage has done all the research on it. Our laptops now, uh, instead of going with MiFi, because we're having problems with batteries and the vehicles explode, then we can't get the batteries replaced. Uh, the computers of the board that allowed us to purchase after the budget talk actually have a MiFi system in it. And we're now testing a SIM card in the laptop that'll get us internet connections. So we don't have to worry about the battery, everything's hooked up to the car. We also have the scanners that allow us to read the, uh, much like the things at Walmart where they do the, uh, SKU lines and stuff. Um, we have scanners in the vehicles that allow us to scan registration cards, you know, driver's licenses or photo ID cards. And then automatically downloads it into, uh, downloads it into our record management system or our lease citation system. And we actually now are printing the citations out in the field when the officers are pulling cars over. And once they hit submit on that citation, copy that citation and automatically sent to the magistrate's office. Yeah.
The police department's writing many more citations than...
Oh, absolutely.
Just for the record, we don't, we don't write a lot. To be honest, probably the majority of the, of the issues in code enforcement get resolved before citations ever issued. That, the first thing we do is try to resolve it. Then if we can't, then unfortunately sometime we have to file a citation. But, um, usually it's, it's time and energy and effort to get a problem resolved. And when it gets resolved, it's, it's clear, but usually we're not at that, that point. But I would certainly say there's some technology we can still look at.
I'm talking about debit card. Do we, can I come here and use a debit card to pay for parts?
No, no.
Can I come here to use a debit card to pay for my father, daughter?
No, no.
That's, that's basic. I just, I hate to keep barking at the tree of technology, but EBTs are basic. Been around for years.
Yeah, without that, too much in the weeds, but I've dealt with that issue as well. This is a little bit of a business in the government community that verges a little bit. Um, so definitely a great idea to get, I mean, like I said, you know, you're nineteen eighty-five, I think, pretty sure you walked into a store and use a credit card. Wouldn't they get rid of those things, get the slide card? I don't think they have that. Uh, you still have one of those here?
Oh, no, we don't use that.
Anyway, the fees are often the challenge with the credit cards. And in low governments, a lot of times you get flagged. Uh, there's some finance, financing, accountability things that back in from a government perspective. But it can be done, I'm saying it can be done. I'm saying if, if it's a policy decision that you ever want to upgrade to the year two thousand or to how the process payments, we're gonna do it, it's just gonna cost us the best and, and doing it right. Okay, uh, good ideas and good thoughts. Let's move on to our last two topics and circle back to, uh, internal communication before I move on from...
Well, John, that's one of the things, that interruption with, with, with Mike's comment about the, you know, electronic payment. That's something we can, you know, we talked about technology, that's probably a global thing that, you know, the board wants to investigate that and thinks we need to at least consider that, the pros and the cons, we can, you know, we can look at that. So I would, I would incorporate into that. Again, it ultimately may not make sense for us, but at least we can investigate it, and maybe it does make sense.
Okay. Uh, any other comments on parks or public works? All right, now we've got police and public works left. Uh, police, um, I always get people on the computer here, I still get a little engine, talking about somebody who cares about it. Um, so the, the challenge here is capacity as it relates to community engagement. So in the last forty-eight hours, I have gotten, uh, probably a half dozen texts and several Facebook messages from the Mount Lebanon Police Department, because there's apparently been a rash of vehicle break-ins. And it's a friendly reminder to me, uh, that, and I'm sure as your police force will attest to it, you do not have the capacity to put a police officer on every corner as much as you'd like to. May bury, and many communities would like to be may buried, you just can't do it. Um, it, it's just not practical from a financial perspective. So how do you make that police force even more effective? And a lot of that is about community engagement and outreach, education and public. So, uh, what I sense in talking with the chief, uh, is, and it's common in a lot of communities, is that when things get tight, you go back to the basics. So you don't have as much of the outreach as you might used to have. And by outreach, I mean programs that engage the public so that the police force is not, uh, some scary unknown out there. Engage the public in a way that educates them so that they remember to lock their vehicles, but also understand that it's a priority for the whole community to help suppress crime. Um, and, and also build community goodwill, customer service. Again, uh, police officers, you know, nobody likes to get a ticket. So there are good ways to give, there are good ways to write a ticket, and there's good ways to arrest somebody, and bad ways and so on and so forth. Uh, but community engagement is all of it. So providing the capacity for the police department would be a potential priority that if the board said, we need to get back to doing a lot of the program that we used to do, but no longer do. And maybe there's some new programming out there that we can do that is not about picking people or arresting people or patrolling the streets. It's about engagement, education, community outreach, which has tangible benefits to the community. That's my own comment there, I'm not gonna push anything right there. I drive a white Explorer.
We already have it at our target.
Okay, awesome. Okay, uh, public works. This is all about the road program. I think that's the biggest priority here is the road program. And you made a lot of good strides here. Two components here are funding and policymaking as it relates to the road program. You've got Buku road mods, a lot of it, rural road mods. So making a policy decision, you're gonna continue to invest in alternative ways to keep the rural roads, for example, fresh, but not try and, and fund rebuilding the whole system. That's just not practical. But the term line, I said, oh, the rural roads are gonna come, well, this is probably not, you know, the best idea either. Uh, so implementing and continuing the program you have, the rural road program you have, and then looking at the paving program as the, the bigger part of that. Uh, and, and looking at that from a standpoint of how is it sustainable over time? There's a science in the art of road programs. There is no magic number about how much you spend every year, how many lane miles you should pave every year. But there is a science to analyzing the roads, and, and the town's made strides in coming up with a program that is back-based, that's science-based, engineering-based. Here are roads, here's the, the problems of certain roads, correcting those roads, et cetera. The challenge is how much you're gonna spend each year and when. You're not gonna spend, and looking at the numbers, you're not gonna spend enough to get caught up to have a road improvement for the next ten years. All right, well, so what do you spend? Nothing, or what do you spend? There's a number between zero and, you know, five million, that is the right number on an annual basis for North Island Township. So I think that the, the, the issue here is, as part of the budgeting process, number one, sticking to that road plan, prioritizing the, uh, the rural road program as part of the overall package. And then setting a realistic number that continues to regularly invest and implement that road program. But recognize that if you're not spending general fund money and you're drawing down fund balance, at some point, that will be a drive. So that needs to be a deliberate discussion during the budgeting process when we say, well, we, we think we want to spend this much money on budget, where's it coming from, X is coming from here and Y is coming from here, and together we're spending Z. Well, eventually, is one of those buckets gonna go around? And then what do we do? Because that's what happens a lot in a lot of communities, um, is that it's, it's sort of feast or famine, to use, uh, what Andy used earlier. And then everybody's happy when it's, it's feast, obviously, but then when there's no road paving program, things get a little... Um, so, so I think from that perspective, and also the other one from public works would be, um, level service and customer service, finding ways, this is already brought up in another context, but finding ways to engage the customer and the public and getting feedback. And having that be a, a loop that, that informs how services are provided. Uh, there is no magic number in terms of, uh, customer service or, um, how, you know, evaluating what's right for North Island Township in terms of paving or plowing, but the gauge is the customer feedback. So providing a deliberate venue, a deliberate venue for that feedback would be a priority. So the folks that, uh, have the opportunity to say, I'm waiting three days to get my road payment applied, they have it on. But what if they weren't? You know, what, what would they do? So, and, and if they came down here and they, and, and they knocked on the door and they come to somebody at the front desk, well, then what happens with it? And one recommendation, I'm, I'm hitting the high-level stuff too, but also looking at, at the work order process. If you have a good process, I mean, you talk about, you know, digitizing and updating. You've got a digital work order process, it, it can be elevated, it could be some more priority placed on it. Um, making sure that the, the recording out of that system is consistent and regular and means something and, uh, and they're sitting there and not getting dealt with, there's certain ramifications or results from that. So revisiting the work order process is a little bit in, in the weeds type of recommendation, but it's in here as well. So for public works, road program, rural road program, level service, customer service. Any thoughts on police or, uh, or roads? Before we move on to the last topic?
Mentioned work orders.
Yeah.
There's one word in work orders that I totally get, orders, that's the word is dismissed.
Oh, okay.
You know, I, I look, we got a work order from John in the mail Friday, and, uh, it was from a lady that was, uh, her husband was handicapped, and he requested a handicap sign in front of her house. And John responded to the, uh, email.
That was fantastic.
It was, it was really, she was, she was very complimentary of the two people from Public Works that visited her home. Okay. Okay. Now, we could put dismissed on there, but that's, I don't even like that word. It should be, it should be corrected or, you know, instead of maybe resolved with quotation of, I talked to this resident, she was very happy with, you know, the work that was performed. I mean, she, that lady was very happy.
Yeah, but that should, that should have been resolved on dismissed. There are ones that, I mean, I.
No, I have, I think the word dismissed bears something.
Well, I think that, I think you have to look at, from at least from our work order standpoint, work orders that come in that we cannot address. And I thought, again, you can say can't address. Someone submits a work order for us that requests a repair to the turnpike. I mean, sometimes we struggle internally with, well, we may have called the turnpike and asked them to fix it. Is that resolved? I would say no, because they may never fix the problem. Is it dismissed because we can't fix it or address it? So we could have other categories. Mike was certainly, I'm not throwing Mike over the bus here. He was in the room putting the system together, but we worked with our, we did the automatic work order system. We have various categories to go to the various departments. But I think sometimes, unfortunately, they really are dismissed. And John touched earlier on the difference between business and government. As much as we try to provide good customer service, product, provide better at times, sometimes our answer to the customer is, if you're always right. We just don't do that. And we try to even tell them in a nice way that we can't help them. But I know when I go to Kohl's to return a pair of pants, they do it every time. Because I'm always right. And they're great. I mean, I think Kohl's provides great customer service because they always take my pants back when they don't fit. Even if maybe I screwed them off.
If you're warm.
Even if I wore them on. But here, we just can't, we can't do that. I know sometimes that people struggle with that, with government.
And I think I talked earlier about the customer service training. I have sat, I did not, for half a day and taught nothing more than about how to say no. Because John's right, I mean, one of the differences in government, you say no more often than you say yes, unfortunately, which is a little different than in the private sector. But there is a way to say no that doesn't send the person off, and you have to make everybody happy. But so, you know, again, circling back to one of those thoughts about investing in the customer service, how do we say no? How do we do it in a way that is good customer?
It's dismissed without an explanation that drives me nuts.
Right.
You know, sometimes we'll get one that's dismissed and.
You're sure why?
You don't know why.
Well, we, they don't like, and that system had a lot of different options. But we had one, a lot of different work options either. Because if we had four work options, we were maybe needing for a fifth or a sixth. It creates a confusion. So the two, we did something and it's resolved, or we talked to the person, it's resolved. Or it's dismissed, there's nothing for us to do. It's either something we can't, it's a private drainage problem or whatever it might be, we just dismiss it. Because there's no, we're not taking any more action. So we either don't get action, or we're not taking an action. As an organization, in the case of the turnpike, we're not gonna take an action. So we would dismiss it and tell them to contact the turnpike. Or we may contact the turnpike and that would be it. We would still dismiss it because we're not taking any.
Well, that we would understand because of the location. But if it's something that I don't understand and we're just ready to dismiss on it, then I gotta make a phone call to you and ask, why was this dismissed? This is my work.
And we can certainly put things in. I know usually if I'm, usually if I'm gonna dismiss a work order, I'm gonna put in there at least why. It may be a quick, a half a sentence. Sometimes it's a little more elaborate, sometimes a little less. I think we got a work order for someone recently. It was, it's, there's no name on it. It's, it was strange things, just crazy things about the township and all kinds of, people are corrupted. It's, that's just dismissed. I mean, to me, I'm not gonna put three or four sentences about why, I dismiss that. I'm not sure if anybody would see that and think, this guy, there's not even a name here or an address. This is just someone doing something strange. But I appreciate what you're saying, Mike, as we try, and I try, I know, and I think the directors do. Maybe sometimes they get overwhelmed with responding to work orders, putting some words in there so you know what happened. And plus, we like a record, I like a record of what we did, because it may be, you may revisit it two or three years down the road.
Well, the reason why it's important to me is because when I get them, there's a phone number on there, I call the resident.
Okay. Last thing I want to talk about and collect any final thoughts, or as you asked for you, is the internal organizational structure communication. Because the key to implementing any of these priorities would be to have a clear system of communication and action. This ties together a lot of things that I've talked about. At the benefit of having the township manager structure, the benefit of having a professional staff, the fact that we want to not create side loads, we want clarity of communication and action. And this is a simple graphic that illustrates the role of each level, the primary role, I'll say. And so it's not to say that you have to fit into one page and not the other, but it's to say that you're always starting from the same point. So let me use an example, if you don't mind, I'll use the work orders example. The board sets the policy that we're going to have work orders. John finds a solution, staff implements, staff uses work orders. The board set the high-level policy at some point, I don't know when that happened. This particular board member goes through and reads every single one, which we think about from a management perspective. That's not saying policy, that's because you find value in contacting the residents, none of us went on, diving further down in the weeds, which is great, okay. As long as you're starting at the policy level. What the challenge becomes when somebody in organizational structure focuses only on reading the work orders, but not on the bigger picture, policy, staff, the role as an elected official, that's when the challenge comes in. So you have elected officials always at the lowers, not the right word, at the lower level. And nobody's setting policy. You know what happens? Nobody knows what the policy is. Nobody knows why we have these work orders. Who cares why work orders are painted on bottom, I'm doing them, and nobody's gonna kind of put the policy in place as they were doing work orders. So this graphics represents that township residents are top of the food chain, always are, and government always should be, any of them. And feedback from residents goes to the board supervisor, or commissioners who set that policy about we're gonna have good customer service, we're gonna use work orders, so on and so forth, set our budget for each year. You have a management level with the manager and the assistant manager, you have an action level with the department heads. And again, it's not to say that the department, the management level doesn't take actions, like they just sit there and manage all day near their desk. And it's also not to say that the directors don't manage. But the primary functions are what those are. So the primary function of the manager is to manage, that's the benefit of having a manager. The primary function of the department directors are to direct the action of staff to implement. And this is an important reminder in terms of how the township administration operates. And it should be an important part of your strategic planning process because things can break down when those chains of communication break down. So ideally, if this discussion is revealed with the work order request, those work orders, it's submitted to John, and they're distributed to the commissioners through that main of communication. So what emphasizes the strategic planning process, that the importance of this is that the breakdown in that structure will result in confusion in policy, result in inefficiencies in effectiveness, and not getting done or implemented the direction the policy set by this board. Any questions, comments, thoughts on organizational structure and communication?
I just got a question for you. Do you think that under each department director, you should actually have employees?
Yeah, that's a good idea.
For the thing?
Yeah, like a big box, a big block of all employees, yeah.
And only because, I think, I think you hit on it where you said that when there's communication that basically violates or goes end-to-end chain of command that you have set up here, it ends up with chaos.
Right.
And I think, I think several times we've seen that here. And for example, the other day, we got a call from the code enforcement officer. And basically, they couldn't understand why a person whose house had been condemned, why we couldn't go in there and make an arrest on it. So we basically called them in, and we sat down, and we talked about it, we worked it out. And then once we worked it out and came to a successful resolution, I made sure that I sent the manager what actually occurred, what action we took, and that he could forward it on to the commissioners as need be. So everybody, because the incident started when a commissioner called me and said, hey, listen, I got a question about this because one of my constituents called and said, he's calling the planning and zoning, they're saying it's a police issue, he calls the police, they're saying it's a planning zoning issue, nothing's being done. So once I was made aware of it, I then went, we took the action, we met, we decided, and we worked it out, said, this is how it has to be. I didn't go, I didn't go right to that person who complained, the commissioner who complained. I sent it to my chain of command and said, hey, just so you're aware, this is what happened. We got a complaint from a commissioner, we looked into it, it's been successfully resolved. This is what we're gonna do in case anybody on the board has a question or a thing. So he basically then sent it to whoever he feels he needs to send it to.
Yeah, and that's a good example. Bush departments are often good examples of following proper chain. And if all, the entire structure was followed that way across all departments, I think you have a lot less challenge because communications is the root of any issue, ultimately is. So on the left side there, as we were just talking about, is the communication chain of command of this area. I think I labeled there, but just the idea, like we just talked about, was going up the proper avenues, the proper before inform and talk to the board communicating. Ultimately results in a much better solution. So I, it's a good idea, I'll add the employees, staff, along there in terms of action.
I have one more. I have one thing. We talked about a lot of different, a lot of different directors and stuff like that. One thing that I think we missed, or it's not on here, but I just missed, emergency management.
Okay, yeah.
We do have a good team, we do have good emergency management preparedness, you know, plans and everything. I think that's something we need to look at also, attached to strategic plan, what we're looking for from now, five years down the road or ten years down the road, where's that from?
Okay, so next steps will be, I'm gonna work with staff to develop, finalize this draft report that will link all to you all, get some feedback. You're gonna start your budgeting process. And we talked about software tonight, we talked about staffing tonight, we talked about planning tonight. So these are all things that need to be prioritized and considered to be pulled into the budget process in twenty seventeen. And then the value of keeping doing this every year is, you're not starting fresh in twenty seventeen, you're like breaking. Because you're not gonna get everything done next year, you're just gonna go down the list ideally. And that's the way it should work. So in seventeen, you're thinking about what you can make, and you can get down seventeen, and the list will go up this year and sixteen as an additive process. So any, any issues, topics that I didn't talk about that I do think are priorities that should be forwarded in this?
John, you had mentioned for the planning department, kind of getting a better handle on the role of the department, different staff members, really kind of delving into it a little bit more. And you did say that for the other, for the other departments, and I'm wondering if it makes sense for us to do that. Maybe that's a subcomponent of this, or that's the phase two. And I don't mean audit them and determine if they're efficient. It's more of, you know, some of the things I think about are, because I think there's seven, there's seven commissioners here. They're all, obviously, they're all different. It's just the, it's just nature. If it was one person running it or running the business, you do what that one person wants. You're the president of a company, small company, you do what that person wants. It's not like that here. I think that at some point it'd be a valuable discussion for us to, again, talk about, if it's Public Works and it's, you know, the past, this past year, we've talked about hiring some more employees. I mean, how do you make that decision? What's the goal? Is, you know, we don't get into, we don't get into those sorts of discussions that I think would be valuable. Again, there's no right or wrong answer, but I think that it would be helpful for the board, I'm speaking for them. I shouldn't, they can chime in and tell me I'm wrong. I think it'd be helpful for them that you would have those sorts of discussions and they can make those decisions, rather than make snap decisions. Again, like I mentioned even with parks, maybe there's a consensus on this board that, hey, parks, parks are okay. And that, not saying they aren't, I'm just saying that could be, or the police department. We like the level of service, we're responding to calls in a reasonable period of time. We believe that the residents are relatively satisfied, whatever that is. I mean, I think that it'd be valuable for the board to get into that because that's where you really get into, you know, monetary issues to a great extent, from a standpoint of, you know, what level of service you want to provide. So maybe that's the phase two of what, you know, where you're coming from. You had mentioned it for planning, and I liked it. It's not to get into the planning department and say, here's something you're doing wrong. It's trying to get in there and saying, are we doing it, can we do it better? Do we have the right resources? Maybe we need to do that for all of our departments. And again, it's not to analyze their quality of work, it's, do we like what they're doing from a, are they doing what we want to do?
Right.
And are they getting it done in a reasonable period of time? Does Rich Albert get his work orders done properly? Does he get his cars fixed quickly enough? They do a good job, and I don't think they don't get cars repaired because they're efficient. They don't get any cars repaired quickly because there's a lot of work orders. So we need to be able to get to that at some point and really maybe analyze that work. That's just my opinion.
No, I think, and that's a good point, because as I mentioned earlier, taking the tip of all these icebergs, and each department was a little bit different, and this would, this, the tip of the planning zoning function was the organizational structure of the responsibilities. But that doesn't mean that every department shouldn't go through that exercise. It could be, you know, a further analysis later in time. The other point you mentioned too that we'll talk about in the report is, you know, I talked about the importance of strategic planning and also part of that deliberative process for decision-making for expenditure. So we need, you know, outline a process for identifying the need, quantify the cost, figure out the source of funding when those big things come in. You know, this is a high-level kind of overview. I could give you like back of the napkin of each department, just because I've been doing this for so long, but I know the hands and outs of every staff member. You know, I had a police department colleague, or every police department could use another person or two. But based on, you know, that standards of people, you know, population per officer, you know, their average in terms of their staffing, but they've got to get at the engagement. Public Works, the road program is the big issue there because of the funding. That's not a staffing issue, I'm not saying there isn't staffing issues there, but the tip of the iceberg is the road program and how we fund it. Parks are maxed out. Can't grow the programs, can't grow the maintenance of the facilities without some level of capacity. The planning zoning was the goals in the department, what are the clear goals, responsibilities? And administration kind of managing those communications, and then the economic function, how that goes across all departments. So that's, that's kind of the grilling of the iceberg, reach the functions, without that going into foreign industries. So we've got, in this first draft, we'll be circulating to the board, we're gonna have fifteen, twenty recommendations. Most of them are all, which will have some costs associated with them. And then just roll into the budget process and the prioritization process.
I think one thing that you're missing too is, we keep talking about level of service. And I think on some of the departments, we have a problem with level of safety. Like I believe it was Officer, Commissioner of the County brought up about parks. At times, we have one person, or cutting grass by himself. So, you know, when you talk about parks and maybe need some more personnel in that, that's something we need to look at too. Is level of safety for employees. It would be like putting a guy out in a bucket chart by himself. And he doesn't have a bucket, and then he can't get down. Some of these jobs are two people, three people jobs, four people out there with one person.
That's a great point. That's the.
I think that's a lot of flack for that. Hey, now, with the film enforcement. If you go to somebody's house and that person is crazy or whatever.
You best patrol and, like, some, right?
Yes, single, single usher car.
That good one. Any other topics or issues that want to put on our radar? Back to you, John. Any other topics or issues on what are on our radar?
I can mention, there's this, we used to have two programs, and I think what's going on in today's world was the police versus the people, so to speak. We used to have Citizens Police Academy. We don't have that anymore. And I think that's a great program they put on, and we used to have a Junior Police Academy. I think that's another good program that, you know, you can interact with the kids, you know, keep them busy, so to speak.
And I couldn't agree with Commissioner Moore, and I guess the problem that we have from a budgetary standpoint is the funding for it. When the, when the programs originally started, it was my understanding, and Commissioner Casser would probably give the board all the information they need, because he was here when it was started. We received funding from one of the congressmen. And unfortunately, when that funding dried out, then we needed to come up with thousands of dollars in order to continue the program. And I guess there's some discussion on who basically nixed it, whether it was the board at the time, or whether it was the chief at the time, because he was looking at, well, you know, I got to replace portables, or I got to replace MDTs, or I got to replace desktop computers. But I couldn't agree with you more about doing that. And matter of fact, we're trying to look now and trying to revisit the Citizens Police Academy, but in a, instead of the capacity it was, in a smaller capacity, where we're not going to deploy a lot of funding in order to do it.
Okay, so sorry, you want to get back to that? Any other comments or suggestions? Okay, we've been at this for almost an hour and 45 minutes. That's a good effort, I think.
The one thing I want to say is, there's been a lot of discussion about public outreach, stakeholder input, and things of that nature, getting a sense of what the public wants. I think globally, North Huntington Township is a great place to live. And I think the majority of the residents here believe that. Because our phones aren't ringing off the hook with different complaints. I can tell you 15 years ago, I got a lot more phone calls than I do right now. And when you get those phone calls, part of that public outreach, and part of that gathering information as to what the public wants from a survey, is our job, when we talk to people. And when we get the phone calls, and when we're at events, and when we're at the shopping center, it's up to us to gather what the silent majority wants. A lot of times, we get the vocal minority at these meetings that wants something. And from what I've seen earlier this year, there was some people that wanted to react to that. In fact, I'm sorry, Mr. Britannia isn't here tonight, because I know he directed a call at me at one point, that said, if somebody's coming to a meeting complaining about their rent, maybe we have to do something about it because they shouldn't have to be here. Well, I understand that. And what I said at the time was, if you're going to react to everybody that has a complaint, there's going to be insanity here. And I think we've seen some of that. Some of the complaints that we get as commissioners, whether it's by phone, or whether it's a personal meeting, or some of those complaints need to be dismissed. They should never even make it to staff. I mean, sometimes we get complaints, and I can name some of them, I won't, that from people that it's not our issue. Either it's not our issue, we can't do anything about it, it's a private property matter, and you try to direct them to the right people, and it's some people you just can't satisfy, there's no doubt about it. So those are the complaints that we should actually dismiss and not even bring to staff. If there's something we can do about it, we should bring it to staff. In a work order complaint, or a work order fashion, something like that, to join, and then let him distribute it as it goes. I think, like I said, North Huntington is a great place to live. We don't get an overwhelming number of complaints about a single puck. Where, I think at one point, we used to get a lot of complaints about speeding in the housing plans. Even those are dropped off. Now, maybe people just got fed up and said, well, there's nothing, they're not going to do anything about it. But the bottom line is a lot of them are going away. But on the other hand, the police department has taken, has normally great lengths to put radar signs in housing plans and on various problem roads, and then they've done some enforcement, dashboard lines. So they've actually addressed a lot of it, too. I think, my opinion at this point is, North Huntington should be in a maintenance mode. We have a good thing, let's keep it that way. I don't know that we need to go looking for problems. I think it's a great plan, a strategically, maybe a strategic plan is, you know what? I just want to be kind of maybe right here, where, you know, five years from now. We have, we have money in the bank, we have money in the bank because we managed it really well for a long time. And 20 years ago, the township used to take out tax anticipation loans to pay the bills until the taxes started coming. We haven't done that in, I can't tell you how long, John, we've never done that. In the last 18 years, yeah. I think we have a good thing going. And we can't spend down, we have a lot of money in the bank, nobody can, anybody about that. We actually developed a fund policy to maybe start spending it down gradually. And, you know, gradually is the bottom line. Because we don't know what things are going to be like in five years. We've had a boom of development, and I have people come up to me all the time saying, North Huntington's a great place to live, don't let anybody screw it up. I've had people come to me at meetings and say that. So I'm, at this point, I'm very much in maintenance mode. We have a good thing, let's keep it going the way it is. Now, there's plans for the future, if there's some things that we want to improve with specific goals, if we want to do something in public works, we want to make improvements. Let's identify what it is that we want to improve. Now, I think we all agree, we could take more roads. There's no doubt about that. That's been a common thread for years. And we gradually work towards that, and we gradually increase it. If we want to offer more recreational facilities, we can't respond to everybody that comes into the meeting, I want this, I want that, I want this. It has to be a general consensus. There's a lot of nice things that we can do. But we have to look at the future of the costs associated with it. And I just think we have a good thing, you know, a good thing, let's keep it going. So that's all I have.
Okay, that's a good way, positive way. So the purpose of strategic plan is to keep the good thing going in North Huntington Township, I think that's a good tactic.
John, I agree, you need to be fiscally responsible. I mean, I agree, you need to be fiscally responsible. But this is 2016, we're still punching time cards. I mean, that's, there, you can't legally charge things, interfere with what needs to be done to update this township.
Maybe you missed what I said.
I didn't miss what you said.
I don't think, I didn't miss what you said. I don't think technology is, technology is a great thing, when employed properly. And I didn't say anything about not moving forward with those kinds of things.
Well, you said you like where we are. If we're going to stay where we are...
No, I made you literally.
Okay, well, that's what came out of your mouth, so that's what I'm telling you, you said. We need to move forward. It's amazing we're back to where we are.
So North Huntington Township is on a good path, and the purpose of strategic plan is to make that happen. And make sure that five, 10, 15 years from now, the board of commissioners, hopefully, are all still sitting in their seats and straight up to be, look back and say, we do anything to be done to make sure that this is still a good place to live and work. Next steps, like I said, is we'll be coming back to you with draft recommendations to even start the budget process. Do you have budgeting scheduled already?
You know, we actually, John, normally would be going a little bit sooner. I try to push everything back about one month this year, only because I wanted to incorporate some of the things you had for us. So we're probably looking at, normally we're in October, but I think this year will be a little bit more lenient, so... Depending on what your timetable would be, we'd see something in September.
Yeah, we'll be able to circulate the draft. That's right. Yeah, Mike, I got to go through it and do some work, and I think circulate the draft, and then make any changes that we need. If the board needs, what, you know, a special meeting, or if I wanted, uh, September...
We can talk about it again in September, maybe a work session. If it is a special meeting, that certainly would be fine to be, but we don't want to release a special meeting before it's going to be there, so that would be...
What's your September work session?
I think it's the 15th.
It's the 3rd Wednesday, the 21st? I could be wrong with my dates.
You're right, 15.
15. So with that in mind, given that we want to make sure that this is beneficial to the budgeting process, I really want to, you know, I don't want to space, say, speak now for a point piece, but this is the easy part. Listen to me round one for an hour and a half. The hard part is to say, okay, well, we agree that everything on this 20 pages is, are the priorities for 2017, and we agree to organize tough decisions on how that impacts the budget for next year. So my recommendation would be that if there's something a lot of people working out there, just throw it out now.
I guess I'm so, yeah, I'll speak my piece, so... When you say recommendations, are these your recommendations, or are there going to be recommendations that staffs are going to actually propose? I guess how is that going to be written?
Oh, it started with staff. I mean, this is, this is a outside consultant's report, but we're relying heavily on the board from staff and from these committees we've had with the commissioners, so I am big pro, because like I said, I bet in their shoes. I can't come in and tell you what's exactly right for North Huntington, but I can facilitate a process, I can table work with other communities, and I can document it for you. So these, that you folks consider on a table, if a policy decision's always important. So to answer your question, it's all the, both the staff and the officials and consultants collectively developing this. Ultimately, you guys, ideally, I'd like to see some kind of formal action, I mean, I'd recommend some kind of formal action. You know, the September 15th meeting, review it, if you want to make some tweaks, we tweak it, and then being after that, you say, you're going to think of a...
But John, they could, they could implement none of it, parts of it, over a long period of time? It's your report sort of analyzing the organization at a high level? With some recommendations for them to contemplate?
Right, and none of it, what we talked about tonight is it. The things that we talked about tonight are what the recommendations are. So there's not, there's nothing working in here. This is high-level, software upgrade, you know, technology upgrade, staffing levels, level of service, customer service, all the things we talked about. And those are generally the specific lineups in your budget. And policy decisions that you have to make. The document is planned, does nothing more, it's just a plan we all agree generally with what's in it. It's not going to bind you to spending the money or making any decisions, decisions come after that. But at least you have a document or a...
Can I just make a suggestion to Commissioner Hayes? I have to give, I have to give credit to the manager for developing the thing for wanting a five-year plan and requiring all the department directors to have a five-year plan. I worked at other places where every year, you went in and you said, okay, here's my budget for 2017. There's no idea what I was going to ask for for 2018. And, you know, the thing I, the thing I think is most important when we do that is, he takes a look at, and he makes us justify everything we need. For example, since I got here in 2012, every year in my budget proposal, I'm asking to replace the lockers that the officers use, because I think they were donated from the 30s. But yet, when we look at the budget plan, and when the manager reviews it with me, we sit and we have to prioritize and say, okay, what's more important, lockers or MDTs? Lockers or computers for the cars, or for desktop, you know, lockers or equipment? So again, I think that keeps me on key there to say, okay, this is what I'm trying to do, and I know in another three years, we're going to have to replace all the desktop. Because our IT people have told us, five years is like mandatory wear for desktop computers because of, you know, the storage and everything you can do. So again, I think it's a credit to the township, to the manager, that we are held to that standard, that five-year standard, and what we expect to see in the following years, not just one year at a time.
That's a great example, and I'm glad that the chief said that, because I maybe, I should take a witness step way back and say, this township's already doing a lot of really good things that aren't happening in other places. So do one, the fact you're going through this process is, you know, a step forward that a lot of communities aren't even willing to consider, because they're not anywhere here where North Huntington is. The fact you go through a deliberate capital budgeting process like that is light years beyond communities that are going to stone's throw. So this is all about going, taking it to the next level, maybe even better. It's not about saying that North Huntington is doing a lot of things wrong. It's saying you're doing a lot of things right, and having to build on that. So from a policy standpoint, using the example that the chief just had about, you know, if we're coming down the budget, we've got to make tough decisions, locker or technology. When the board adopted this plan, the board says, that going is our priority for the next couple, three years. We adopt this plan, that's going to help us make the decision that we're going to fund whatever the example was, the technology side, and try and live with, you know, lockers for another couple of years, because that's our priority. Yeah, you've got a lot of, a lot of good best practices here that other communities should look at. Okay, anything else that you can document? Thank you for your time, it's good feedback or input.
Thank you, John.
Did he drop me again? I think I lost it again.
Good question. All of the favors, hi?
Hi.
Hey, I was going to criticize you.
I know, I know.
One more thing I need you to do, John. There's some companies that stand a lot in front of us.